Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education. It's now brought to order on Monday, June 4th, 2018 at 7:02 PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome each and every one of you. Your attendance is important to us and it reflects your interest in local education. And it's greatly appreciated. So, today for item 381.18, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Nolan Hammonds and Cedric Williams Jr. representing Petey Graham Elementary School. So if you'll step up to the front here. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So if you stand right there. And Ms. Hines is going to read your bios, and then we're going to have something for you.
We have Nolan Hammonds. My name is Nolan Hammonds. I am 10 years old, and I belong to a family of five. My dad's name is Adam, my mom's name is Melissa, and I have two brothers named Levi, and he is six. And my other brother's name is Landon, he is four. I grow up, when I grow up, I want to be a lawyer.
Alright.
Some sports I play are baseball and football. I also love to play hockey and going fishing on my boat. And I love to catch walleyes. My favorite place to eat is Buffalo Wild Wings.
Alright.
My dad is a real estate agent, and my mom is a stay-at-home mom. That is fabulous. Next, we have Cedric Williams Jr. I am 10 years old and belong to a family of five. My mom, Victoria Williams, and my dad Cedric Williams, and my two oldest siblings Desmond and Deja Williams. I have a German shepherd named Kirby, and a goldfish named Flash. My favorite thing to do at home is read, watch YouTube on the iPad, and play outside with my friends. I am running a cornerback for, I'm running a cornerback for my tackle football team called the Westland Meteors. My two favorite fast food restaurants are McDonald's and Taco Bell. My top two favorite restaurants are Applebee's and Buffalo Wild Wings. Guys are making me hungry. When I grow up, I want to be an all-around neurosurgeon and be famous for it.
Okay. Alright, very good. So if you stand right there, Dr. Weaver's going to come down, and he's going to give you something from the Board of Education to thank you for coming out and representing your school today.
Okay, guys. So Nolan, you're going to be a lawyer. So do you negotiate with your mom and dad now? Is that how you're getting practice? He negotiates about bath time and stuff like that?
Yeah, she's right there. She said yes, he does.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were over there. So, okay. So he negotiates all the time, does he? Okay, well, you're going to be good for it. Nolan, we want to give you this award of recognition. And that's to Nolan Hammonds for coming and being a part tonight. Now Cedric, you're going to be a neurosurgeon. What can you tell me about neuros? Okay, never mind. You're going to do good, aren't you? Alright, I may need surgery later, so I'm going to be real good to you. To Cedric Williams Jr., the award for leading us in the pledge tonight. Thank you so much. You guys are great.
So, Dr. Weaver? Dr. Weaver, did the two young men bring anybody with them today? Or did they drive themselves?
Come on back here. The president is right.
Who'd you bring with you?
My mom, my two brothers, and my grandma.
Alright, and anyone else?
No.
Who did you bring with you?
My mom.
Yeah, is someone else you forgot?
Important? Your teacher? What's your teacher's name?
Mr. Weissy.
Right. Is there an administrator here tonight?
My principal, Ms. Hawthorne.
Alright.
Well, great. Thank you for bringing them with you. I appreciate that so much.
Alright. So, the two young men are going to take their pictures in the front. And the parents are more than welcome to leave. You can leave or stay. It's up to you.
Can I leave or stay?
No, sir. You must stay. And that goes for anyone else who's, we're going to have some more presentations. So if you have anything, it won't hurt our feelings if you leave as soon as you're done. But you're more than welcome to stay in how the process goes. So now we're going to move on to item 382.18. Roll call and attendance. Ms. Hines? Please excuse.
Mr. Bucklew?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Hines? Yes, Ms. Madison?
She's excused.
Ms. Medel?
I'm here.
Ms. Walker?
Present. Five zero.
Five zero.
So five are in, we have enough for a corn. Moving on to item number 383.18, recognition and presentations. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I would like to acknowledge the presence of our Wayne Risa Executive Cabinet, and turn it over to Dr. or Mr. Larson Schindler. I'm just saying, I'm always doing that. Mr. Larson Schindler.
Thank you, Dr. Holt.
It's coming soon.
I know, it's on its way.
Yeah, I'm proud to say that this has become an annual event where we invite Gino Montane from our building and grounds to congratulate him on an award from MSBO. I know he's probably going to say, he gets up there, he walks with, works with Tony Spiezak and Matt Conley. They're a great team. Again, you know, this is the third year. We are lucky to have Steve Azikian here tonight and Scott Little from MSBO to present the award to Gino.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Steve Azikian, and I'm here as a board member from the Michigan School Business Officials. But fortunately, luckily for me, I'm also Deputy Superintendent at Wayne Risa, so I get to come and be with you and my colleagues. I'm kind of feeling like, as Jim said, I'm in the movie Groundhog's Day, because this is the third first board meeting in June that I've been here presenting an award to Gino. And first, let me congratulate this board and this administration for allowing the flexibility and ingenuity to occur on a daily basis in your district, in Gino's department. It's evident to me that that kind of innovation is supported and fostered in your district, and that's great to see. The Meridian Award is an award just for that. It's an award to recognize innovation in school districts, whether that be in the business office, or in the operations office, or transportation, or even in the IT department. And it's a word that's not given out lightly. Gino was reminding me, this is actually the fourth award that his department has received in the past seven years, and the third in a row. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott Little. Scott's the Associate Executive Director of MSBO. He's going to describe the work a little bit. Or do we let Gino do it? Okay, we're going to let Gino do it, since he came up with it. So go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. This year's innovation was really kind of cool. We were able to, we're always were with cold temperatures and older buildings like we have, worried about water leaks, pipe breaking, and coils breaking during cold temperatures. We were able to strap into the water meter of the building. As soon as there's any sort of a leak during unoccupied time when no one's in the building, it notifies us immediately that we have a coil break, a flood. So instead of walking in eight hours later to a flooded building, we can be notified within five minutes, dispatch our emergency team there. We isolate the leak, we clean it up, school continues the next day without any problems. One other great thing about receiving this award is that we do get a scholarship. And for the last three years, we've been able to give it to three different career tech students. I look forward to next year giving away another scholarship to a career tech student as well. Thank you.
So, good evening. I'm Scott Little, Associate Executive Director at MSBO. And I've actually got the award and that check that Gino mentioned as well. But before I give this to him, I just wanted to comment that in my role at MSBO, I interact with facilities directors from across the state. And I tell you what Gino and the team do here with Tony and Matt is one of the best departments in the state, and I mean that sincerely. So you have a real gem here. Sometimes you don't know that, because it's just all internal. But I'm telling you, I've been around the state, and I've listened to what folks are doing, and nobody's doing as cool things as they are here. So kudos to them and to their whole department. And so, without my fingerprints anywhere on this. And then there is, in fact, a scholarship check. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Gino. Job well done. Next one?
Okay. And so for our next recognition, thank you again, Gino and Mr. Azikian and Mr. Little for coming tonight. We appreciate that. For our next presentation, I would like to invite Mrs. Beth Johnson up to recognize our John Glenn High School DECA students. As she's on her way, I will say, I was able to go to the end-of-the-year event for the DECA students. And oh my goodness, what an amazingly remarkable group of young people who I just, I was absolutely floored at how wonderful our kids were doing. So please, Ms. Johnson, share a bit more about our DECA students.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The girls know I typically go rogue. I did a speech, so we're not here for half an hour. First of all, good evening, and thank you for inviting us to recognize two amazing young ladies from John Glenn. I want to tell you a little bit about both of them. They actually, I got to meet them three years ago, as they were freshmen walking into John Glenn and came to open house, and walked up to our DECA table and said, "What is DECA?" So some of the students, you know, explained to them what it was, and they decided to dive in. I knew right away at that first meeting that these were two pretty special young ladies. DECA is an organization, it's not a club. It is made up of high school and college students who want to be leaders in their chosen business field. This is what they've decided to do. Caitlin Blivens and Emily Zarnicki are the two I'd like to recognize tonight. They have been instrumental in our DECA program for the last three years. They are only juniors. They have led community service projects like our Adopt a Family program, which we do during the holidays. And one year, we adopt, we had so many kids, we adopted two families for the holidays. And all the way from Thanksgiving to Christmas, and provided presents for seven young kids in the community. They have raised hundreds, thousands of dollars actually, for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, which is a huge program that DECA works with. What else? We've done, oh gosh, we've done so many different things, I can't even think. But most importantly too, they've also become leaders within our organization. Without these two, I can tell you right now that this year would not have gone as well as it did. The numerous texts to either one of them saying, "Please tweet this out." "Please send a reminder for the next meeting." And they have done every single thing that I've asked them to do. As far as their leadership roles, Emily served this year as Vice President of Career Development for the John Glenn Chapter. She's worked tirelessly with all 52 of our members, preparing them for competitions and conferences. And we had the most first-year members attend the state conference. Out of 20 students, 18 were first-year students. So she did an amazing job. Caitlin is our current chapter president for the remainder of this year. She's worked endless hours for me, with me, with Emily, and with all the other members to make this such a successful year. Over the last three years, Caitlin and I have attended multiple conferences and competitions. State Leadership Conference in Detroit. We went to the Central Region Conference in Indianapolis. They have attended the International Career Development Conference twice, and the State Career Development Conference for, did you wear a freshman year?
Three times.
Three times. So since our freshman year, have qualified for the state conference. The girls compete in the buying and merchandise team event, so they are actually a team. So they compete together. Last year, they were state champions, which qualified them for the International Career Development Conference in Anaheim, California. So we got to, they got to compete, they networked, they met CEOs of corporations, along with doing some sightseeing. We did. They competed last year against 18,000 students from across, actually from around the world. There are nine countries represented. 10? Well, 10 this year. Okay, 10 this year. 18,000 kids last year, and they represented John Glenn really, really well. I was very proud of them. This year, they were repeat state champions, qualified for the second year to go to the International Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. So we got to go to Atlanta for a week. This year, DECA had their largest international career development conference ever with over 20,000 students. Their event alone had over 180 teams that they had to compete against. So the first day of competition, they take a 100-question test, which is a marketing business exam. And then they also had to present a case study, a role play, if you will, in front of judges. The next morning, we go to the mini-award session. Fingers crossed, hoping their names get called. And sure enough, these two got called up onstage as finalists. They are the first finalists John Glenn has had in over 20 years. Which actually, if you're not real sure about DECA, and you're not sure about International Conference and all of this, in layman's terms, they placed in the top 20 in the world. It's quite an achievement, and it's taken hours of practice, tons of hard work, studying, using apps on their phone, printing out past tests and role plays, and constantly practicing most of it on their own, and on their own time.
Good job.
Yeah, really. Along with competition success, they've also really excelled in their leadership skills. Caitlin has been elected to represent the John Glenn DECA chapter as their president once again for the 2018-19 school year. And in March, Emily was elected by all of the chapters across the state to represent them as a state as their new state president. So when I first wrote my script, I said, "Yes, she's the vice president." And she goes, "No, I'm not anymore. I'm the state president." I'm like, "Yes, you are." I changed my speech, I got it. So please, join me in congratulating these two amazing young ladies. And I cannot wait to see what next year brings for these two.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, and lastly, sorry, Shawna. Lastly too, they are what we like to call my DECA dream team.
Oh, yeah. They definitely are a dream team. Ms. Hines has some certificates to bring down. So I, I'm going to share a story with you. At my high school, they didn't have DECA, but my best friend was in DECA. So me and all my 16-year-old wisdom decided that I was, I'm not going to say skip school, but I decided I was going to leave school and go over to her DECA program, and go to class with her, and then come back. And the crazy thing about it is the teacher thought I went there, and she allowed me to be in the DECA.
We'll take any kids. You got kids, we'll take them.
So we definitely appreciate your hard work. And on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education, we would like to give you this award of recognition for your outstanding achievement in DECA. We are so proud of you, and I can't wait to just tell everybody. So this award is for Caitlin, is it Blivens?
Yes.
For the Wayne Westland Board of Education acknowledges your efforts at the Board of Education's regular meeting.
Go, Ms. Caitlin.
And we also have Ms. Emily, is it Zarnicki?
Zarnicki.
Zarnicki. And the Wayne Westland Board of Education acknowledged your efforts at the Board of Education's regular meeting. Thank you guys so much for your.
Thank you.
Let's give them another round of applause. Jenny's going to take your picture up in front, so that we can put you on the website. So if you're going to go up to the front there, and she'll take your picture. And then, like I said, if it's your parents or anything, if you want to leave, you can. But if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay as well.
Alright. So the next, and thank you, Mrs. Johnson, for all your efforts. Even accepting students from all of the high schools into the DECA program. We appreciate you. I know, I know she is. So with this, I would like to bring up Mrs. Amanda Leidlaw and the HFLI Jumpstart Villager App Recognition. So, Mrs. Leidlaw.
Hello. My name is Amanda Leidlaw. I teach at John Glenn, and I've been given this opportunity to expose our students to a program that is new and not well utilized outside of the city of Detroit. The program is run by the Henry Ford Learning Institute, and it's called Jumpstart. It's half entrepreneurial business and half design thinking, where students create an app. These gentlemen were a part of a team of four, and they had 14 hours to build a business plan and create a prototype, practice the pitch, and pitch it to a series, an actual panel of local entrepreneurs who do social good work. There was, ooh, Andy Di Rosi. He runs the Detroit Bus Company. And there was another gentleman, I am blanking on his name, who builds the nitrogen-based ice cream programs in schools. He really liked their app. And then another gentleman builds local furniture for shelters. So they had to present this pitch, and I think the best way is to have them go ahead and do it. So I'd like to introduce you to Kevin Lawrence and Ashton Franklin. And I really, really would love to hear them say this all again. Thank you.
How we doing, everybody? We alright? Alright, good. So, picture yourself as incoming Wayne Memorial or John Glenn student. You're Gianna Renee. You're 15. You're a freshman. You like to write. You're also from Inkster, Michigan, and you're interested in being a veterinarian. But there's just one key thing that you're missing as you continue to move on and go into your college career, is that you need scholarship money. This is where Villager comes into play. Villager is a free, personalized, overall, more efficient way to raise and obtain scholarship money. So looking at the app real quick. First, you open the app, you see the big B on it. You create a personalized profile. It tells about yourself. It tells your name, it tells your age, your graduation year, what you're interested in, and what colleges you'd like to go to. Then you come to the main menu. There are five categories. One is donate. So donating means that you can actually, thank you. Donating means that you can actually create scholarships for people to be able to obtain. Another one is finding your scholarships. So you look through certain colleges, you see what scholarships are available. And also, there's another slide, or another guide, another area, which is apply for scholarships. So this is where you actually go ahead and hit apply for those scholarships. And then, like I said, you create your scholarship. And then there's another area where you can actually look at this whole amount of funds that you receive through these scholarships. So the reason that makes Villager different from others, I was looking in our market researching, and another very competitive app that I found was Scali. And Scali, if you're not aware of Scali, Scali is another app that basically what it does is it finds scholarships. You find those scholarships, you can apply. But there are two key differences when it comes to our Villager app and Scali. The one big difference is with Scali is on a national level. Therefore, everybody's looking for the same scholarship that you're trying to get. Therefore, it is more competitive. Therefore, you're less likely to get those scholarships. With us, with our Villager app, it is more localized. Therefore, you have local businesses, local people, local communities, local groups actually being able to raise money for you, so that you have a better chance since it's in your area already. And another key difference is that with Scali, it costs to be able to use the app within the app. With ours, all we ask is just for a simple charge, and it's free to use as much as you like. The reason why Villager's overall more important, like I said, it's localized. And another great thing about it is that because of local businesses are able to give back, it's a great win-win for both of us, because your community gets money, but also, these businesses are getting brand loyalty. You know, why is Apple the way that they are? You know, why is Samsung the way that they are? There's a reason, because they have brand loyalty. If you're able to get brand loyalty, more people are more likely to go to your restaurant, to buy your products. Therefore, it's a win-win for everybody. And also, let's say that you don't necessarily need the scholarship money. A lot of these colleges actually offer internships. So let's say you don't need the money. You could also get internship experience. So really, it's just a win-win for everybody. When looking at our cost structure, we wanted to request a million dollars for this app, 150,000 for any legal accounting duties, $70,000 a year for four of us in our group. So that means about $280,000 for the first year for all of us. $200,000 for marketing. This means ads on related websites like edubirdie.com. And then also, social media, Instagram, Snapchat, you name it. It also means on social media. $100,000 for a stable place to work and develop our app. And also, we hope that as we continue to grow, that local businesses will see the true value of our app and be able to invest in us as well. So I want to hand it over to Kevin for success in our value.
Including like advertisements with social media. We will be doing like, selling t-shirts at community colleges and universities. And I think this app will be valuable to low-cost, I mean like low-income families, because that can't take on the full price of college. And I think it will be successful, because like everything's like as a community, like building. Just like, yeah.
So to reiterate, Villager is the perfect app for you, because not only does it have you the access to gain money, but it also gives you more time than what you would at any other place. And remember, it takes a village to raise a child.
Wow. I am absolutely in awe. That is amazing, young man. You guys did well. So if you step down here, Ms. Hines is going to give you and the rest of your team all certificates. Only two of you came today, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Two young ladies are also a part of the team, Gianna Wells and Shayna Jason, but they were unable to make it tonight. But these two can carry the show pretty well.
Yeah, I have to tell you, young man, you did well. I'm in a master's program, and we do a group project, and we can't even get started on who going to do which part. And so, I am absolutely amazed at what you're doing. And I can't wait to see how you do in the future, and where you're going to be. I just can't wait. It's amazing. So go ahead.
I am blown away as well. Awesome, awesome, awesome. So, Mr. Ashton Franklin, the Wayne Westland Board of Education acknowledged your effort at the Board of Education's regular meeting. So congratulations. And we have Kevin Lawrence as well. The Wayne Westland Board of Education acknowledges your efforts at the Board of Education's regular meeting. So thank you so much for your participation. And we also have Gina Wells, certificate for recognition. And we also have, is it Shayna? Shayna Jason as well.
Mr. Bucklew had a question too, for you, young man.
Not so much a question, but a comment. You folks have done a fantastic job. And I really can't say enough about the great work that you're doing, and how this is going to maybe impact your lives moving forward. But I want to say something about Mrs. Leidlaw, if I might. I think that, you know, we have some wonderful teachers in this school district. We also have some teachers that kind of stand head and shoulders above the others. The short time I've been on this board, you've been here with groups of special students at least twice and maybe three times. I think that, you know, among a group of great educators, you are clearly visible at the top. You do wonderful work. I look so forward to seeing you back here in Wayne Westland next year, doing more. I look so forward to seeing you back here in Wayne Westland next year doing more great stuff with our students. They benefit from the extra work that you put in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I look forward to your help.
So if, when they have you go right out in the front there, and they'll take your picture. Thank you again. That was excellent. Good job.
And if I don't understand what you did, I ask questions.
So we're going to move on to item number 384.18, citizen comments, agenda items only. Okay. So this is for the agenda items, and if you can give your name, are you speaking on agenda items or you have? Okay, you'll come a little bit later. This here, this portion is for agenda items. If you have a question about anything that's on the agenda. Okay, all right. Moving on to item number 385.18, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver. Any support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines? Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Correct. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number 386.18, review and approval, Michigan High School Athletes Association. I'm not sure who's handling that.
I'll do it.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have a...
No problem. So we are recommending to approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association membership for the 2018, 18, 19 school year, and we ask that you waive the reading of the enclosed resolution that's in the packet. This is something that we have to do annually to become part of the Athletic Association, especially with our huge push this upcoming year to increase the efficiency of our athletic programs.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 386.18, Board of Education Committee Report. So we only have the one for today, which is the Policy Committee, and Ms. Hines is going to read that for us.
The following is a brief summary of minutes from the Policy Committee held on May 30 of 2018. The meeting was called to order at 3:30 PM. In attendance, Dr. Shelley Holt, Superintendent, Melody Hines, Board Trustee, Sally Madison, Board Trustee, Dr. Fred Weaver, Board Trustee, Sovereign Fort Carol Madell, Dr. Stephanie Barage, Wayne County RISA, and Alyn Moore?
Alyn.
Alyn Moore.
Alyn Moore.
Alyn Moore, Tamara Phoenix, Administrative Assistant. Discussion, the communication protocols and process which outlines the procedures for the community input and district feedback. It was also discussed that this form be adjusted so that teachers and staff can use the same procedures for handling concern in a professional manner. The committee is moving forward with informational packet for the fall, which will be introduced by the board members and the superintendent to explain the role of the Board of Education and what their responsibilities encompass, and explain the difference between the superintendent and the Board's role. The committee questioned if the Board knew what to look for when making sure that the district's policies are up to date. We do not have a service that does this process for us. A recommendation was made to have companies that provide this service come and provide an overview of the product that they offer and the price. It was noted and agreed that incoming board members should have an orientation to be able to hear the views of the superintendent. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Moving on to item number 387.18, Review and Approval Business Services and Finance Items, Mr. Larson Schidler.
Okay, thank you, President Walker. The resolution that you have before you for the tax levy is required by the district's certified millage amounts to the local taxing authorities annually. The certified millage amounts will be added to the summer tax bills for collection. I would note that our debt millage this year is at 2.72 mils, down slightly from last year's 2.83 mils.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Second.
Moved by, supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 388.18, Review and Approval Human Resource Items, Ms. Simmons.
Hi, thank you, Madam President. I present for review and approval of Ms. Siobhan Johnson, her Executive Director of Climate Culture and Social Emotional Learning. Her data sheet can be found on page 30. Ms. Johnson has obtained her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Eastern Michigan University, her Master of Science in Elementary Reading and Literacy from Walden University, and she is currently enrolled in an education specialist program with University of Michigan Flint. She has held roles in Romulus Community Schools as a fourth-grade teacher, a school director, and most recently as an elementary principal.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Welcome, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. I am just delighted that you all have decided to make me a part of this team, and I'm excited to join you soon, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Welcome to the Wayne Westland family. Did you bring anyone with you today?
I didn't.
Okay. We just want to acknowledge everybody because it takes a village. Thank you. Item B, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I present for review and approval of Mr. Mark Miller, Senior, Director of Student Services. His data sheet can be found on page 31. Mr. Miller has obtained his Bachelor of Business Administration degree from Saginaw Valley State University, his Masters of Business Administration from the University of Phoenix, a Masters in Health Science Education from Kaplan University, and is currently enrolled in the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals MDE Certification Program. He has served as a team leader, school supervisor with Vista Meadows Academy, after-school activities in Vista Maria, a math teacher in Harper Woods School, and currently the Dean of Students and District Athletic Director with Harper Woods School.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Welcome to the Wayne Westland family, Mr. Miller.
I just want to thank everyone for this, this great opportunity. I'm just so excited to be a part of the team and to work in the district that I live in. This is a great opportunity, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Item C. Item C, huh?
Thank you, Madam President. I present for review, review and approval, Mr. Justin Tronka for Assistant Principal at Stevenson Middle School. His data sheet can be found on page 32. Mr. Tronka possesses a Bachelor of Science in Physical Education from Eastern Michigan University and a Master of Science in Educational Leadership from Concordia University. He has been employed with Detroit Community Schools as a teacher and currently as a teacher and teacher-in-chief with Groseal Township Schools.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved. Support.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Tronka, welcome to the Wayne Westland family.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to thank Dr. Holt, the School Board, Principal Grohl for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be here and be a part of this community and a part of this team and help move this district forward. So thank you very much for this opportunity once again.
Item D, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I present to you for review and approval, Mr. Charles Hallman for Principal Site Level Director of Special Education at Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. His data sheet can be found on page 33. Charlie, or Mr. Hallman possesses a Bachelor of Arts in Special Education and Elementary Education from Michigan State University, a Master of Art in Teaching from Mary Grove, and a Master of Education in Special Ed Administration from Grand Valley State University. He has had multiple positions here in Wayne Westland Community Schools, most recently serving as our Senior Executive Director of Special Education.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Yeah, don't we know this guy? A little bit.
Madam President.
I think we've seen him around somewhere.
He has now been known as Mr. Hallman instead of Charlie.
I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Hallman, I can't say, I mean, what can I say?
Welcome back.
Well, you know, what I will say is that Mr. Hallman was our distinguished alumni for John Glenn.
Yes.
And I was really impressed and so amazed. He is truly an asset to our community and to our school district, and that I just was blown away, and I just thank you for being a part of our family.
Well, I thank you for the continued opportunities to be able to serve our families here. It means a lot to me to be in my own home district where I graduated from and continue to do the good work that we do each and every day. So from the bottom of my heart, thanks to all of you for the continued support.
Thank you. And last but not least, I probably should start wearing glasses. Item E, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I am presenting a resolution for a non-renewal of an administrator's contract of employment for John Albrecht. The resolution can be found on pages 34 and 35 of the board materials.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell. Any support?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number 389.18, Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB Board of Directors. So if you look on page 36 and 38, MASB is the organization for the school board, and they have director seats for each of the different groups. And so we belong to Group Six. And just to give you an idea of what Group Six includes, it's Ann Arbor, Chippewa, Dearborn, Red Rapids, Kalamazoo, Plymouth. And it's based on size. So they had elections for a director's seat, and no one from this group decided that they wanted to run for it. So I'm on the task force, and I told them that it's only for, it's a partial seat, so it's like for a year, and then they'll have elections again. So I told them that I wouldn't mind stepping up to the bat for a partial year. So what we have to do is I have to be nominated by the school board, and then we have to go through the interview process, and it has to be on the record. So that's why it's on the agenda for today. So if anyone thinks that I'm capable of serving on the Board of Directors for the MASB for partials into March, I believe it ends, we can take a motion now.
I nominate.
Go for it. Okay, so we'll take the nomination from Ms. Hines and supported by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? I just want to know, when are you going to find time to do this? We're going to work it out. I didn't tell the way yet. And you're doing it in public? You won't attack him?
So I would like to go back and say, I would like to nominate Ms. Shauna Walker to be on the Board of Directors for the Michigan Association School Board.
Okay, and then it was seconded by Mrs. Madell. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-0.
Thank you so much. So it's still a process. So what we'll do is we'll have to send in the application since it's been approved, and then I still have to go through, excuse me, an interview process, and then they'll make the, their board will make the final determination if they want to accept me or not. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So moving on to item number 390.18, Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Madell, do you have one for this?
As required by federal law, excuse me, Board Trustees received a copy of the Head Start Monthly Financial Report for April at your place. May will be coming soon because the month just ended. So the trustees can expect to receive that soon, and we need a motion to approve.
Okay. So at this time, I'll take a motion to approve Mrs. Madell's report.
Motion.
Moved by Mrs. Hines. Any support?
Second.
Second by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
The record show 5-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Moving on to item number 391.18, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Holt?
Thank you, Madam President. First thing I would like to do is to thank my school board. I know that you all have attended quite a few extra meetings in the last few months. Quite a few probably doesn't even cover it. But I wanted to thank you and appreciate you for coming in and all of the work that you do. There's not much compensation for this work other than your love for children, and I just appreciate you for that. And so as we continue, we are looking to, as a, as a community, make sure that our school board is really involved in what is happening, not necessarily on a day-to-day basis, but is very apprised of what is going on and involved in the policy decisions in particular. And we do also know that moving forward with our bond work is going to require more out of our board members and our community as well. So we are currently looking at our bond calendar and putting out information around that work. So I just want to make sure that the community is aware that that work has already started. The grade level configuration decision was just the first of many decisions to be made. I will reiterate again that we will go through a process to decide how and when we will consolidate schools. That is not something that's going to happen overnight, and no one knows which schools it will be. I cannot stress that enough. I know that there's a lot of folks that want to know more information about one thing or another. But around the bond work, we are literally taking it slow and steady to make sure that we can have more people involved as we make these collective decisions as a community. This is not something that should be done to any of us in our community. It should be done with everyone in the community. That being said, we have put out several calls to action for our community to be involved in the committee work through, our employees can be involved in our collective efficacy action teams. So, there is a forum that's being distributed in our This Week in Wayne Westland internal documentation. It is also online for folks that want to be involved in our bond committee work. So, if you are interested in wanting to know more about the bond or be involved in those conversations, you, these are not private conversations. They just involve more time for all of us involved, myself and the, and the board included. So, if you want to be involved in this work and want to know real answers, please come in and become involved, and you have to read the lead. So, we are putting a lot of information out within This Week in Wayne Westland. We have a lot of information that goes out into the community via our website. And the connection, the next edition of the connections for the summer is coming out with a bit more information as well. So, we want to make sure that we are, one of the things I'm striving to do as superintendent is to truly have a transparent organization. We know that there are no secrets in Wayne Westland, so let's really make sure. There are no secrets in Wayne Westland. That being said, there is timing, and everybody doesn't need to know everything at the same time. And so, we just have to be respectful of that and know that as we make decisions, we are involving folks, but sometimes decisions aren't finished yet, and we need to get a bit more input. That means that we go through a process. So, I want to take this opportunity to thank those who were patient with us as we went through the process of staffing this year using a zero-based budgeting methodology, and also with conversing with several of our partnership organizations and entities to make sure that we had things done correctly. There's one thing to do work, it's another thing to do work right and do it the right way. And we are striving to make sure that as we move forward, we are doing things the right way. So, I want to thank our employees and really our union leaders with one, Mr. Harris being in the room, Mr. Hallman being in the room, our union leadership from our parent educator union in the room. They are really striving to make sure that we all know what's happening, and we are keeping in constant communication around these tough decisions that are coming in. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. Also, I want to extend an invitation out to anyone who would like to become a member of the Superintendent Steering Committee. Those applications are coming out very soon. We're, we're trying to get them out by the end of this week, but with all the events and things with the schools, it'll probably end up being a little bit closer to next week. But the Superintendent Steering Committee does not start up again until August, September of next year. I know because my first day here was my first Superintendent Steering Committee meeting, September twenty-fifth. And so, it was, it was a joy. It really was, really was a joy. But now, we're in the place where we're, some members are leaving, some members are coming in, and those applications are coming out. So, if you want to be involved and have a voice, there are many opportunities to have a voice here in Wayne Westland. I'm also going to take this opportunity to thank, from the bottom of my heart, Mrs. Rebecca Peck for all of her work. This is not her last board meeting, she has one more. But many of you know, having lost my father a year and a half ago, I truly understand the difficult decision it is to choose family over work, which is very hard for those of us who are workaholics. And so, Mrs. Peck, I admire and acknowledge you for making that tough decision on behalf of your family. Thank you. We are very appreciative, and you always have a home here in Wayne Westland. That being said, our team has decided to reconfigure Mrs. Peck's work within the current structure. So, we will be releasing a revised organizational chart at the June thirteenth Leadership Council, and then it will be out for, for, for more feedback, and then it'll be out for public review. So, I also want to thank Mrs. Jennifer Curry and Mrs. Jill Simmons, who have both stepped up voluntarily, I have to say. This was all kind of their idea. They all brought it to me going, we think we can do this. We think we can do this within what we already have. And, and, and they talked to their teams, and they're literally making it work. And it's a lot of hard work, but we, we in Wayne Westland are no strangers to hard work. That being said, I want to congratulate the graduates one more time for an amazing graduation weekend that we had. Tinkum was, wow. I've never seen, nothing reminded me so much of being back home in California than the tinkum graduation, I have to say. And then such regal ceremonies for John Glenn and Wayne Memorial at the E M U Convocation Center. We do things right here in Wayne Westland. We send our kids away into the world correctly. And so, I want to not only thank the people that were onstage, but I also want to really acknowledge the people that were backstage. There were a lot of folks that were getting all these kids corralled, making sure they all had their hats on, and their, their little hats on, and the tassels. And people did have zipped up things. I mean, it was just, when you get back there, you see all it takes to get over four hundred kids at one time to all look the same and have robes on. You can just imagine. You think they're wrong, but they're really not. And so, thank you to everyone who was backstage and made everything happen. And I want to thank our parents and our community for trusting us with your children. I know it's not easy. I know we have work to do, but I, like each and every one of you, I trust my teachers with everything. I trust my staff, and I know, we, we, like they said at the graduation, according to, what was it, Kendrick Lamar, we gonna be all right. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. So, moving on to item number three-nine-two-point-one-eight, Citizen Comments, Non-Agenda Items. So, now is your time. So, just so you know, for those who are going to speak that haven't spoke before, we have a blue sheet. I don't want you to think the board is being rude to you. We allow you to do your speaking, and then we answer your question within a timeframe to make sure that we have, give you accurate information back.
Right. I want it like three minutes, right?
Yes.
I'm going to make it very.
Okay, just please give us your name and your area.
I will. My name's Amanda Thomas. At this time, I am the Elementary Dual Diagnosis Teacher at Roosevelt McGrath. I'm here today as an advocate for my students and for their families. As some of you may know, RISA made the decision to close the D D Elementary program. When I say those words, it's easy to think, well, classrooms close all the time. We move things around all the time. It's just a classroom closing. But for many of my students who have cognitive and emotional impairments, this classroom is the first time that they've come, they've been able to come to school and be there for an entire day, that their needs were met. For some of my students, they've been placed at four different schools by the time they hit first grade. So, for these students, closing a classroom is more than just, oh, you're going to move on to another program, and it's going to be fine. They'll meet your needs as well. Except for these students, being in a dual diagnosis program, there's only four in the county. So, closing Wayne Westland meant that my students now would be bused thirty, forty-five minutes, possibly an hour, to another program in the county that would offer the exact same services that we were providing here. So, it is no easy thing for us to talk about. It's extremely personal for the classroom staff that spent hours upon hours of their own time and thousands upon thousands of dollars of their own money to build this classroom. Because in this classroom, we do not have a curriculum. We build the entire curriculum ourselves. We don't have a report card. The Wayne RISA website lists our report card as two thousand thirteen fourteen. It hasn't been updated since. It doesn't reflect the placing guide that we have. We haven't had a technology update since two thousand thirteen. Our iPads are so old, the software updates don't work anymore. When I started in my classroom, I didn't have a dry erase board, let alone an interactive smartboard, whiteboard, that's foundational technology in a gen ed room. So, we've put a lot into this, into this program to make it possible for these students who have such complicated needs to access an education. And then the decision was made to close the room without any input from the classroom staff. No one visited us. No one asked us who, about what those students' needs were. No one asked us for our numbers, how many kids we actually had in the room, what rumors we had heard about new referrals. So, when the parents received word that the room could no longer be justified, I had a really hard time looking at my parents in the face and saying, sometimes these things happen, because I couldn't find a reason that this happened. I couldn't wrap my mind around why we would make this choice, why we let RISA make this choice. So, before I take a step back, I'd like to thank Dr. Holt. She stepped into my classroom. She took time out of her very busy day and let me rant at her for however long I ranted at her, and then asked me to write it all down. And in that time she spent in my room, she spent more time in my room learning about my students and their needs than the individuals that made this decision to close the room. So, in a moment, you're going to have an opportunity here from Diana Ward. Diana Ward is the parent of one of the students in my classroom. I ask that you listen to her story, because it serves as a reminder of what happens when decisions are made by people that are so far away from the classroom without the input of the families, the students, or the teachers. When decisions are made like this, it doesn't just hurt the students. It hurts the schools, it hurts the district, it hurts education. I think that Wayne Westland is better than the service I was able to provide these, these families. And I think it's important that we listen to what impact this has had on Ms. Ward's family, because going, we may not be able to do anything about what's happened to this classroom, but going forward, they deserve better. So, Diana, I would like you to come up and share. And I also want to thank you, because it takes bravery to come up and advocate in front of people that you don't know for your child. So, gentlemen, Diana Ward.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Ward.
Hi, I am Taton Thompson's mom. Before we came to the Wayne Westland School District, he was put in five different schools. He was never in any of them longer than ten minutes. They tried to expel him. This was kindergarten, first grade. He's only in the second grade. He doesn't adapt easily to people, but he did with Mrs. Thomas and the people in the room. He has made a lot of progress this year. And when I say a lot, I mean, he's a whole different child type of a lot. I keep hearing you guys saying that it takes a village, but I'm being sent to a whole other community over an hour away. So, where's my village? This was it, and you guys just took it from me. My son deserves better. He is special needs, and it's not fair. This isn't fair, and none of this is fair. I have three other kids in the Wayne Westland School District that are in general ed. I'm going to have to move my entire family to Northville because he can't be harnessed in a bus for over an hour. Is that fair? You know, you guys didn't shut down the D D program for the older kids. If he was twelve, he could stay. But instead, when he's twelve, he'll be pulled back to Wayne Westland. So, he'll have to transition again. So, I have no village. I did. But I'm happy you guys have a village, and all of the stories that I've heard tonight have been great. All of the funding going to all these programs have been awesome. I'm happy for them. I don't know what to say for us. I'm going to have to move my entire family to be closer for my special needs child to be put into a school.
Thank you, Mrs. Ward. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else on this that wants to miss sample? What, you're ready?
I'm braced, so yes.
All right. Okay.
First thing I was going to talk about, this is the third time this has happened, so I don't know why, but it is. Superintendent did allude to what I was going to ask about, but at the state of the district event, the parents and the community members were asked to fill out the interest group and to be on their various organization groups to get information and input. My question is, where and when can we find these various meetings being held? Superintendent talked about the bond proposal is only one aspect. There are others. I've been searching. I so far can't find it. Is it going to be set up in the summer? We'd just like to know that. The other thing is, I've gotten contacted since the last school board meeting, so I'm here on behalf of people behind me. Please note, information has come up to me that a sixth-grade youth has a kill list to include staff and students. The current social worker at that location didn't think, that was the first line of offense, go to the social worker, because that's the chain of commands. Didn't care, hasn't done anything, dismisses the staff. The staff has gone to their union rep, and the union rep is upset and cannot find information on what to do and how to proceed with this. There are three, what they have seen and heard, there are three certain staff on that list. They are scared for their lives. What is the policy and procedures that are being done in the district for this? I've been to a lot of meetings, the, the stuff that happened earlier this year, I'm not going to dwell on it, but I know we're recreating things, but this is still going on. What more should be done to help, correct, and to prevent the situation from continuing? Again, we are in the transition stage, and I very, and being text and call from other staff that are, do not want to fall along the wayside, that this needs to be addressed in this level, this age level. One other thing that I've been neglected to ask you, and I know it doesn't really fall on the school district here. Back in oh-nine-ten, I was dubbed the runaround girl that I kept fighting and talking between the district and the city of Westland to do something about Palmer Road in front of Adams Elementary, about the street signage. The big signs are still up. Schuman has no left turn. They got people there, and I'm proud of it. But the actual painting is over. It's been ten years now, so it is needed. I will be going back to the city eventually and asking them for more consideration, because it's not you, it's them. I know I'm over, but she did, and I know it was a passionate, and I know that was a staff, and that is different.
Okay, but as the chairman or the president of the board, I have the right to decide who goes over and who doesn't.
And again, that is not.
And so, at this time, your time is up, and thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Laura Kalea, and I'm no stranger to program closing. I work for the Adult Ed Department, and I've been here for ten years. And I just wanted to come to this meeting tonight to thank you for the extension that we had the last two years, although overall, our GED program was not enough to continue. We made a big difference in a lot of people's lives. So, on behalf of myself and my partner teacher, Corinne Stover, we thank you. And I don't know, I hope to see you around. I want a great future, and I'd love it to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to three-nine-three-point-one-eight, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. Special thanks to Ms. Hawthorne from Graham for bringing us Noel and Cedric and getting us off to a great start by leading us in the floods this evening. My apologies for missing graduation on Saturday. My wife and I were talking and looking back over the years. The last twenty-nine years, as a teacher, as a retiree, and as a school board member, I think this past Saturday was only the second time that I missed watching kids go across the stage. I know they didn't miss me, but, but I certainly missed watching them achieve that, that special moment. So, my apologies for missing that. Last month, Mrs. Medel and I attended an all-day workshop at M A S B Hood Headquarters in Lansing, and the topic for the entire day was Title IX and Title IX Compliance. And for the board, I can tell you that beyond establishing a policy for the district, we have very little role to play in, in compliance. However, the role that administration plays is, is a very real one. It's a serious one, and the consequences for not doing what we ought to do as a district when a complaint comes our way can be very dramatic and painful. So, I pass that along as an experience that Mrs. Medel and I had. And then finally, I hope our students and our staff have a great summer vacation. I know it's well-earned. I hope you come back rested, rejuvenated, and ready to go. Reflecting back on this year, it has been a tremendous success academically, in terms of athletics, club achievement. It's been a great year. And so, the gong will start us down. Let's do this coming year what we did this year. If we do, it'll be another banner year for Wayne Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the Wayne Memorial J R O T C. We received a letter from the Mayor of Inser, Mr. Byron Nolan. On the Inser Parade, they didn't have an honor guard, so the J R O T stuff then. So, a letter for Principal Kevin Weber. It is with my uttermost pleasure that the City of Inser extends its deepest appreciation to the men and women of the Wayne Memorial High School Junior R O T C under the direction of Sergeant Lee Gentry for the exemplary performance in the two thousand eighteen forty-ninth Annual Inser Memorial Day Parade. The professional decorum and military precision were the highlight of the Memorial Day Parade. The difference exhibited to the veterans, past, present, in the Wayne Memorial High School Junior R O T C was credited to servicemen and women worldwide. The entire American Armed Forces would have been extremely proud of being represented by this group. Nothing but accolade, honor guard, and approved when describing them. There were not enough adjectives to express the powerful imagery of their laudable participation. Inser thanks the Wayne Memorial High School Junior R O T C for their service. Once again, the City of Inser's boundless gratitude is a small example of considerable esteem for this unit, and we look forward to again witnessing their excellence on behalf of the Mayor of Inser, Byron Nolan. So, I'd like to really congratulate them for stepping up to the plate. Unfortunately, Wayne Westland Parade was canceled, but thank you they were able to step in and help out with another city. As my other board members, I was able to go to the Legislative Conference in Lansing, and I was really excited to hear about some funding that could be coming down our way. They have a grant that I definitely want us to really look into. It's called the Marshall Plan for Talent, and it's money that they're really working on to bring extra funds for our career technical. for our career, technical education, and business partnerships. So I'm gonna definitely try to stay above that, because there are trying to be secrets for all how to get it, but we're gonna make sure we get that money. Right. And they talked about school safety, like as Ms. South was talking about earlier. And they were talking about trying to get additional funding to come down to the schools for us to get extra help with school resource officers, additional counselors, because that is so important nowadays. And then we're able to be with the legislators, but our legislators are very active with our Wayne Westland School District. They help us get money, they, whatever we need, they're really good at helping us out with that. Another thing, there's a couple of events coming up for the kiddos that's free. On June the sixth, a Friday on the eighteenth, the Inxter Police Department's having a free movie night for the kids at the police department. It's really nice. They have a big screen, like a drive-in type, where the family can come out, watch movies. It's really safe at the Inxter Police Department. And then actually, City of Westland, they're having a summer kickoff, June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. It's for the family, it's like a movie night. They come out at Tatten Park, and that's gonna be at five-thirty. And the Wayne Memorial JROTC, they're having an event Saturday, the nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven p.m. They do like a change of honor guard. And I'd like to congratulate the students. I was so excited to hear that both schools did seven million dollars in scholarships. That is amazing. That's two million more than last year. I think Wayne Memorial had eighteen battle victorious, Glenn seventeen. They were so exciting, so I'm just really astonished. The app, the village, oh my gosh, these kids should be on Shark Tank, just like the level. It's amazing in this district, and I get excited more and more every time I go to these meetings. And make sure I got everything there. Oh, and there's some more awards, the underclassmen tomorrow. You got Glenn at ten, I think Wayne is at six. So it's really good to, like these kids, I know it's like every year they're getting more and more awards. So they're doing really good, even with achievements with those presence awards. So I'm really excited for this director of the school district of knowing. And that looks like that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Heinz. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say congratulations to Caitlin and Emily from the DECA Group. Congratulate the young men who created the app. I use apps from time to time that help me along the way, and so I'm grateful to these young men. I'd like to say a big thank you to our superintendent. She came here and found a strategic plan that was really kind of forced upon her. And she has done an amazing job fleshing that out to this point. And I appreciate her efforts so much. I call her the flash, because all you see is, you know, where she was, because she's always moving somewhere else. And so I wanted to say thank you to her. Also, graduation, as usual, was, was fantastic. A lot of fun, a lot of joking around, a lot of wearing of hats. And so that was great. I'd like to congratulate the Office of Academic Excellence on the twenty-one H grant from MDE, over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that is fantastic and wonderful. One last thing, Madam President, I'd like to say. Is when you come to this podium in a public meeting, and you begin to talk about things that cross the line in terms of student safety, you should come with, first of all, you should go through the chains of command to get this dealt with. But secondly, you shouldn't come with, "I heard," or maybe so. You should come with names and, and the dates in which things occurred. Not that you would say them from this podium, but that after the meeting, you can get with the proper, proper people and authorities. I thought that while any parent or any worker can come to this platform at any time and say whatever they wish to say, I think that before you hurt or intentionally try to destroy, that you should have more conversations than just blurting at a board meeting. That's my, that's my take on it, and I understand that anyone in this community has a right to do so, but these are students we're talking about. This is not trying to hurt another individual. This is not trying to lay waste to another adult. This is students, and this is serious. And I want to tell the people that are listening tonight that we take every opportunity, every opportunity.